Good afternoon and welcome to Spokane City Council. For our current agenda of Monday, June 24th, we are going to start with some interviews for the Plan Commission. Let's do a roll call, Ms. Fisher, how about that?
Council President, excuse me, Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Council Members Oppone.
Here.
Council Member Cathcart.
Present.
Council Member Bingo.
Here.
Council Member Dillon.
Here.
Council Member Klitsky.
Present.
Council Member Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. For the Plan Commission interviews, are they in the audience or are they online? All right, I think they are coming in as we speak. So with that, welcome. And if David Edwards is in the house, come on down, David, welcome. Thank you for putting your name in for the Plan Commission. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure, thank you, it's nice to be here. So my name's David Edwards, I'm recently graduating from Eastern with a Masters in Urban and Regional Planning, and I'm a land use specialist with King County's Department of Natural Resources. So I get to work from home in that role, so that's really a blessing. I also shadow affordable housing development projects in Spokane, so that would include the Excelsior Projects and the Thrive International Project on Nevada. So as a member of the Planning Commission, I'd look forward to trying to find the nexus points between affordable housing, zoning requirements, things like, you know, how zoning -- not zoning specifically, but how planning decisions affect the cost to build housing in our city while we're dealing with this housing shortage. And so that's where I'm coming from.
Great. Any questions? Council Member Cathcart.
Yeah, welcome, thank you so much for your interest. Mostly just want to ask, and if you're not familiar, that's okay, just kind of your thoughts around BOKA, the Building Opportunities and Choices for All Act, and just what you think of that policy, and also just kind of our ongoing transit-oriented development work, especially in the South Logan area.
Yeah, so first of all, with regards to BOKA, I'm a huge supporter of that. It's really an equity issue in the sense that it allows people to acquire housing in a way that can keep values -- well, okay, it avoids expansion into the exurbs where we have to keep adding services and adding, you know, infrastructure. And then those residents in those areas then have to commute into the hotspots where all the major employers are, which puts more pressure on our transportation system. So if we were to incentivize infill development, like BOKA does, and also form-based code as opposed to the old code that we were, you know, operating under for the last few decades, you're gonna get more density so that we can leverage our existing infrastructure. And then as far as transportation with transit-oriented development, that's where the equity issue comes into play. So you can be a student at Gonzaga University, but you could live in West Central and vice versa, and you don't necessarily need to have a vehicle, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Council Member Bingo.
Are height limits appropriate for a city our size, and if so, where?
Depends on the science, you know, that is a hypothetical. I don't, I think height limits are, they make sense. You wouldn't necessarily want to have a daylight Rambler, you know, right next to a 35-foot multifamily home, but that might depend, you know. It's funny, you've got, on the South Hill, you've got Huckleberries, you know, that backs to detached single-family homes, and you can barely tell that Huckleberries is there when you drive by. I mean, I haven't spoken to the owners of those houses right there, they might disagree, but it's all covered in trees, right? So there's a lot of different ways to achieve density, and I think it's a case-by-case basis. But form-based code would be one way of addressing that.
Great. Council Member Bingo.
So what about specifically downtown with height restrictions?
Do you mean for residential or for commercial?
Either.
Yeah. I don't know.
That's a great answer. If there are no more questions, David, thank you so much.
Thanks.
We will be voting on your board appointment this evening, so nothing else required of you. Thank you. Amber Lenhart? And also please make note that David is from District One. Welcome, you can see this is very important to council. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, hello, council members.
You can pull that mic down a little bit if you like.
I just heard a podcast where they complained about people doing that.
Pulling the mic down?
Okay, yeah, yeah, like, you come in and you own the place, and you pull the mic down. Okay. Well, council members Cathcart and Bingo, you are my council members, so it's great to see you, but it's great to see everybody. Hi. So yes, my name is Amber Lenhart. I am grateful for your time today and for considering my placement on the Plan Commission. To give you a little bit of background of why I'm here and want to be part of this group, I originally, I grew up in Millwood, I'm a proud graduate of West Valley High School, I'm an Eagle. I will fight you if you went to East Valley. And we, you know, I left Spokane right after high school to go and learn skills that I could eventually bring back to my community. I got to work in Washington DC on helping communities all across our nation incorporate health equity considerations and community voice into decision-making, in planning considerations, in zoning, in education, in tax policy, and things that I really know just enough about to name them. But I know, what I learned from that is the importance of including evidence and community voice in decision-making. And I got to see how we can build well-being through decisions that shape the places where we live, work, play, gather, worship, and so on. So I really hope to, now that I'm back in my hometown, I mean, a few miles east or west, I like it here better than Millwood, no offense, Kevin Freeman, but I hope to be able to bring all the skills that I gathered in that work to here to help just council and the mayor make more informed decisions that are promoting well-being for all of us.
Excellent. Councilwoman Cathcart.
Yeah, same question, and again, thank you for applying and being here, it's great to see you. You know, BOKA, just would love to get your thoughts on building opportunities and choices for all, and what you think of that policy, as well as just the effort underway for South Logan TOD.
Sure. I, I mean, what I learned through all of my work up to this point is the value of learning from other communities and evidence, but also considering community voice. So BOKA, I think, is an evidence-based approach to community planning. I think that it, we've seen already, some benefits come from the pilot. I think it's always important to listen to the community as we implement any project, to think about how it's playing out, and if there are opportunities for improvements. But I will always recommend looking to the evidence and seeing what that says about impacts that it will have on health and equity, especially for typically underserved and unincluded or excluded communities. So I'm a big fan.
Do you have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering what your perspective on parking minimum requirements is, or just the role of parking in our growth as a city.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Oppone. Again, I would like to look to the evidence. I would like to see what the various clearinghouses of evidence have to say about parking minimums and the impacts that that actually has on health equity. I think, you know, I grew up in Spokane, I know how we are a little bit resistant to change. We like to be 10 to 15 years maybe behind some of the other places in our country, which is wonderful, and it gives us time to watch and learn from others. And so I would like to see some of the, you know, understand more of the concerns and hopes that people have around parking minimums, and see how that actually plays out in some other communities. As a landlord, I would say, I would love to be able to have a lot of units, and whether cars are part of my ability to provide housing is irrelevant. Housing is foremost.
Councilmember Bingo.
Are height limits appropriate, and if so, where?
Great question. So I did a lot of work in Washington DC, that's where I gained most of my skills, and there are height limits on buildings downtown in Washington DC to preserve visible access to some of the amazing things that that city has to offer. You want to still be able to see the pavilion and the clock tower, to feel investment in this city. Outside of the central part of the visible, maybe downtown district, or where there's visible sites, you know, I don't know, I don't know. I think that's another point where I would like to go to the evidence and see, do we know anything from other communities about how this actually impacts people's feelings of social capital, their investment in their community, their ability to grow and build new businesses, you know, what can we learn about the potential impacts beneficial and potentially, you know, unintended harms of these things? So I, again, I think it's interesting, I've seen it play out for beneficial ways, I also see where we need more density and our only options are to grow up. So I think, I see the challenge in this question and would like to look to the evidence.
I appreciate that. I would, you know, there are many cities in the United States where there are very, very big buildings, and I would encourage you to look to them and see, as you're asking these questions, see how those are affected in those areas. Thank you.
I just have a question. In your application, you spoke to, you would love to see Spokane adopt a Health in All Policy Statement. Do you just want to speak to that for a minute?
Oh my gosh, if I haven't talked your ear off, maybe caught you at a baseball game with your family, or, you know, nearly ran into you today leaving my parking lot, if I haven't gotten an opportunity to talk to you about health in all policies, please let me buy you a coffee. This is the idea that we are all part of creating public health, whether you work in education, you work in transportation, you work in criminal justice, you work in law enforcement, we all create health. So health in all planning approach or commitment would mean a commitment to multi-sector collaboration for the purpose of improving the well-being of all of our community citizens. So I would just like to see more of a focus on that, bringing together multi-sector partners, because we're the ones who are, you know, they're the ones who are making the big decisions that impact the health of our communities, so we should be doing so collaboratively.
Thank you so much. If there are no more questions, Amber, thank you again for putting your name up, we'll be voting tonight, and you'll just be hearing from us.
Thank you for your time.
Jill, is Jill Yost up? And again, Amber was from District One. Welcome, Jill. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hello.
You've probably got the questions down already.
So professionally, I am currently an affordable housing developer, and I found my way into the nonprofit sector after working in the private sector and trying to do something about this housing crisis, trying to help my neighbors directly and realizing that I couldn't make a big enough difference. But I really believe that my heart is both in the private sector and the nonprofit sector, and perhaps someday the bureaucratic sector. I believe that we can all work together, because there's no single, no one has the one true solution. We all have many solutions to kind of bake a bigger pie, I guess. I'm interested in the Planning Commission because, well, actually, I heard that there might be a question about where I went to high school, so I prepared for that.
Okay, where'd you go to high school?
I went to high school in Federal Way, Washington, in the center of single-family suburban sprawl with one bus line that was infrequent at best. My partner went to high school in downtown Seattle, and the opportunities that he had as a teenager compared to the opportunities that I had, like recreationally, are very stark. And his access to public transportation and to art and culture and sports, and just exposure to any after-school programs was really amazing. And I think that the epidemic of loneliness that we have can be traced back to, I believe, back to that single-family sprawl that I grew up in. It was really hard to experience. And so I didn't realize, or have the words at the time, but I realized that zoning is a really key piece to what my upbringing was. And zoning is a really powerful tool, as is transportation, and having the opportunity to positively impact that and shape our city, a city that I have really grown to love, is why I'm here.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, the same question I've asked the other two, just around the Building Opportunities and Choices for All Act and Transit-Oriented Development.
So I am, I'm a professional, I'm data-driven, but I'm gonna set that aside for a second and just say, I'm really stoked about it. I love BOKA, I spoke on it when you were passing it earlier this year. I am, I live in West Central, I'm, I want to build a carriage house or another space behind my duplex right now, so that maybe I can provide some more housing for my neighbors.
Councilmember Bingo.
I do want to say, I forgot to mention, but I loved the high school pride before, I loved it. My mom is an Eagle, and so she would be very happy, but, so are height limits appropriate, and if so, where?
So I am not, I don't have a background in planning, so I'll start with that, but I think that height limits actually exist naturally because it's so cost prohibitive to build really high. It's just easier to build five stories or less, or when you can use stick frame. And I don't mind tall buildings. I lived in Seattle for quite a while, I am open to those opportunities. The one concern I might have is I do believe that it's important to create communities when you are shaping a city and a space, and that includes more than just little boxes for housing or offices or whatever. And one of the things that I did encounter when I lived in Seattle was, sunlight was an issue, a lack of sunlight, actually. So south-facing apartments became really hot and stuff like that. So I think it's just important to take into account a variety of considerations, and I'd have to do more research to have a really black-and-white answer about it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Oppone.
Yeah, thanks for applying, and I had a similar question just about parking and kind of your thoughts about parking requirements, or the role of parking in general.
Yeah. I think that, again, this is my, I'm gonna give you just my personal authentic take on it, and I am also really open to a lot of feedback and more information to change my mind, but I think that cars have shaped our lives, and we need to not put them on the pedestal that we have for so long. It creates inequities, and focusing on multimodal transportation is really important.
One last question, I guess, hearing some of the responses, how do you balance the needs of a city and trying to plan and create a great city with property rights? How do you balance those?
I mean, I think it comes from, you have to understand the history and the context of those property rights, and nothing gets done without collaboration and building relationships, or nothing lasting gets done. So the way I would balance property rights is through civic and building the city is through civic participation and through connection and cross, like, cross-sector collaboration, which is not a quick answer, but I think that's the answer that would make it last the longest.
Well, thank you, Jill, for your time and your interest in serving Spokane, have some great candidates for the Plan Commission. We'll be voting on your nomination on July 8th, and so you can just wait to hear from us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you guys.
At this point, we are going to go into executive session for 15 minutes for labor negotiations.[1207.61] At this point, we are going to go into executive session for 15 minutes for labor negotiations.
Thank you. That closed executive session. No decisions or action was taken. City Administrator, Mr. Jones.
All right. Now, moving on to tonight's agenda, we'll start with the consent agenda. Number one, I believe with this one, Mr. Wright, you are going to help us with the number of amendments on this one.
Well, we can just make a motion.
Yes. So, we do have a number of amendments. I think in the end, it's a question of whether or not council wants to approve the contracts as presented by the administration some time ago in the grant amount with the name grantees and the sources. That is the First Amendment that's listed. It's listed under Councilmember Navarrete, but she was doing that on behalf of the administration. Basically, a correction, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Basically, a correction to what they initially filed an ob base for the agenda. So, that's the first one is the administration request.
And we're going to stop there, and we're going to work our way through those. Okay? So, Councilmembers, a poll.
Yeah, I'll move to adopt the Navarrete amendment proposed on behalf of the administration.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Can we ask a question?
Oh, discussion. Sorry, go ahead.
What were the errors that we were correcting on this one?
I didn't hear the question, sorry.
What were the errors that we were correcting on this?
I think, I don't remember now. It's been a while.
They submitted the original spreadsheet attachment of awards that were the result of the first round when they did this, and then they restarted, and they gave us the modified spreadsheet.
What, the, does this include the change to the $120,000? Is that in this one?
It does not.
It does not.
Okay, so that's in the last one. Okay.
The last one.
Any other council discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the Navarrete proposal as of May 30, 2024, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any no's?
No.
Any abstentions? The ayes have it.
All right. Thank you. Now, moving on to item number two. Item number two and three will be briefed by David Stockdale, but I think we'll have Chief Oberg come up here to brief those.
Good afternoon, council. Item number two is the purchase of two Mach-Es to support the CARES expansion from the opioid funding. Any questions on that one? Yes, sir.
Are you really getting them for $55,000 apiece?
That's, I mean, that's the rate of the vehicle. There's equipment that goes into the vehicle, limited because it's CARES, so they don't have the emergency package.
And so what will that sort of outfitting cost?
I don't, it's radios, and really, that's it for those vehicles, is portable radios. We don't even put mobile radios in those. Item number two is the five-year service contract with Raycom. So, most of the packages that we get on vehicles come without the emergency package, so Raycom is a vendor that can outfit them with the emergency lights, the radios, so on and so forth. A lot of times, that work is done in-house by our fleet services. However, when they get backed up, this contract allows us to not have new vehicles sitting in our lot for months before they can actually be put in service.
What's the difference in cost, first year being $100,000, and then $75,000 after? Why do we need $100,000 in the first year?
We have more staff vehicles that are sitting right now, so we had both our battalion chief vehicles and our safety vehicles replaced this year. We had additional deputy chief staff vehicles that were replaced, so that trickles down into our fleet. So, it was an abnormally high year this year. That's not what our standard replacement schedule would be.
So, the $75,000 would more accurately reflect a standard replacement year for us.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Items four through six, all these items will be briefed by Major Olson.
Good afternoon, Council President, councilmembers. I have three items. I don't know which order they're in yours. I'll go off the stack I have. The first one is the purchase of tactical SWAT ballistic vest. This is to use some of our funding that we already have to replace the vests that are expiring, actually, I believe, this month. So, we're trying to get those purchased as soon as we can. Any questions on that at all?
Do the vests expire because of use, or there's just a recommended timeframe?
It's manufacturer's statement of when the expiration of the warranty is. When they say that, that's what we go by.
That's a racket, ain't it?
Question. So, these are going to be replacements?
I'm sorry?
Are these going to be replacements?
Yes, they're replacements.
Okay. So, I kind of did the math, and it's about, I don't know, including the shipping and tax, about $3,200 per vest.
Yeah, because these are heavy-duty ballistic vests that could also house, like, rifle plates and such. These aren't just a typical vest for the patrolman. These are our SWAT ballistic vests.
Sure. Okay. Now, when you said that they have an expiration date, can you elaborate a little more on that? Like, is it because how much they've been used, or hopefully not shot at, but, you know, like, how do they have, do they warn out?
Just as I explained to the councilmember, Bingle, it's really the manufacturer says, "We will cover them and say they're effective from this date to this date," and then after that, the manufacturers will no longer cover the fact that they're effective. So, we have to abide by that under safe labor laws.
And what do you do with the old ones? Do you, is there like a recyclable program, or what do you do with the old vests?
Well, it depends on these ones. Sometimes, we can send them to other agencies that don't have the benefits of being able to keep up on the vest orders.
Even though they're expired?
Yeah. And sometimes, they can be used. Sometimes, they'll use them for studies, but other times, they'll be used on vehicles for, you know, ballistic protection where they don't normally have that.
Okay.
So, they do find a purpose for them.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on this?
Just when do they expire?
I don't have the actual date. I believe it's June of this year, though.
No, the new ones?
They're five years. They're good for five years.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to the contract extension for the false alarm program. We contracted with Central Square. They're the ones that actually do, like, the billing, the mailing, and all that part of the, for the false alarm program, which I believe the city of Spokane has over 8,000, or 7,000 alarm calls annually. Most of those are false. This helps us to motivate people to fix their systems when they're not working properly, so that they don't continue to have those false alarm calls, freeing up more offer times for other types of calls. It's only six months, as opposed to in the past, we've done either one to two years. As we are looking at the format that that's being done, and possibly even a vendor change, so we just want to extend this program as it currently stands before we come back with some possible revisions for you.
Yeah, I would just say, I've had concerns with this program in the past. I've expressed those. So, I do look forward to the, you know, whatever the shakeup is with regards to it going down the road, and see if we can't make it a little bit more effective.
Yeah. As a sneak peek, we're looking at putting more responsibility on the actual alarm companies and the alarm owners, homeowners or business owners, to try to get more responsibility from that angle.
Another question. So, this is, I think you just answered one of my questions. These are for false alarms from private residences, right?
It's businesses, residences, all alarm companies.
Okay. So, again, if you can educate me on this, I have a private alarm also, and I have teenagers who forget to turn it off and the alarm, but then I do get, I have to pay, I get like a fine to pay that false alarm. So, where does that money that you find, the people go to, towards, does it go towards like this contract also, or?
So, some of it is, some of it is consumed by the contractors. They administer that program in the sense that they, you know, the mailing, the notices, and such like that, but the rest of the money is then comes back to, I believe, the general fund within the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on FARP? The last one is the janitorial services. This is a contract renewal with ABM. This is for the Gardner Building, I believe, the precincts, as well as the academy. This just extends the contract and also takes into consideration the 2024 prevailing wage increase. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Major. And then for item seven, we do have a request, a motion to defer indefinitely on this one, but we do have Jonathan Adams here to speak on that.
Item seven pertains to the 2024 paving unpaved streets project, and that's been discussed a couple times with you guys. Basically, we don't have the, the bids came in higher than anticipated. We don't have the funds for that, so we're going to go ahead and just, it sounds like we're going to request deferral indefinitely, so.
Councilmembers, a poll.
Yeah, I move to defer indefinitely, item number seven.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Can we ask a question?
Oh, discussion. Sorry, go ahead.
What were the errors that we were correcting on this one?
I didn't hear the question, sorry.
What were the errors that we were correcting on this?
I think, I don't remember now. It's been a while.
They submitted the original spreadsheet attachment of awards that were the result of the first round when they did this, and then they restarted, and they gave us the modified spreadsheet.
What, the, does this include the change to the $120,000? Is that in this one?
It does not.
It does not.
Okay, so that's in the last one. Okay.
The last one.
Any other council discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the Navarrete proposal as of May 30, 2024, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any no's?
No.
Any abstentions? The ayes have it.
All right. Thank you. Now, moving on to item number two. Item number two and three will be briefed by David Stockdale, but I think we'll have Chief Oberg come up here to brief those.
Good afternoon, council. Item number two is the purchase of two Mach-Es to support the CARES expansion from the opioid funding. Any questions on that one? Yes, sir.
Are you really getting them for $55,000 apiece?
That's, I mean, that's the rate of the vehicle. There's equipment that goes into the vehicle, limited because it's CARES, so they don't have the emergency package.
And so what will that sort of outfitting cost?
I don't, it's radios, and really, that's it for those vehicles, is portable radios. We don't even put mobile radios in those. Item number two is the five-year service contract with Raycom. So, most of the packages that we get on vehicles come without the emergency package, so Raycom is a vendor that can outfit them with the emergency lights, the radios, so on and so forth. A lot of times, that work is done in-house by our fleet services. However, when they get backed up, this contract allows us to not have new vehicles sitting in our lot for months before they can actually be put in service.
What's the difference in cost, first year being $100,000, and then $75,000 after? Why do we need $100,000 in the first year?
We have more staff vehicles that are sitting right now, so we had both our battalion chief vehicles and our safety vehicles replaced this year. We had additional deputy chief staff vehicles that were replaced, so that trickles down into our fleet. So, it was an abnormally high year this year. That's not what our standard replacement schedule would be.
So, the $75,000 would more accurately reflect a standard replacement year for us.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Items four through six, all these items will be briefed by Major Olson.
Good afternoon, Council President, councilmembers. I have three items. I don't know which order they're in yours. I'll go off the stack I have. The first one is the purchase of tactical SWAT ballistic vest. This is to use some of our funding that we already have to replace the vests that are expiring, actually, I believe, this month. So, we're trying to get those purchased as soon as we can. Any questions on that at all?
Do the vests expire because of use, or there's just a recommended timeframe?
It's manufacturer's statement of when the expiration of the warranty is. When they say that, that's what we go by. Yep.
That's a racket, ain't it?
Question. So, these are going to be replacements?
I'm sorry?
Are these going to be replacements?
Yes, they're replacements.
Okay. So, I kind of did the math, and it's about, I don't know, including the shipping and tax, about $3,200 per vest.
Yeah, because these are heavy-duty ballistic vests that could also house, like, rifle plates and such. These aren't just a typical vest for the patrolman. These are our SWAT ballistic vests.
Sure. Okay. Now, when you said that they have an expiration date, can you elaborate a little more on that? Like, is it because how much they've been used, or hopefully not shot at, but, you know, like, how do they have, do they warn out?
Just as I explained to the councilmember, Bingle, it's really the manufacturer says, "We will cover them and say they're effective from this date to this date," and then after that, the manufacturers will no longer cover the fact that they're effective. So, we have to abide by that under safe labor laws.
And what do you do with the old ones? Do you, is there like a recyclable program, or what do you do with the old vests?
Well, it depends on these ones. Sometimes, we can send them to other agencies that don't have the benefits of being able to keep up on the vest orders.
Even though they're expired?
Yeah. And sometimes, they can be used. Sometimes, they'll use them for studies, but other times, they'll be used on vehicles for, you know, ballistic protection where they don't normally have that. So, they do find a purpose for them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on this?
Just when do they expire?
I don't have the actual date. I believe it's June of this year, though.
No, the new ones?
They're five years. They're good for five years.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to the contract extension for the false alarm program. We contracted with Central Square. They're the ones that actually do, like, the billing, the mailing, and all that part of the, for the false alarm program, which I believe the city of Spokane has over 8,000, or 7,000 alarm calls annually. Most of those are false. This helps us to motivate people to fix their systems when they're not working properly, so that they don't continue to have those false alarm calls, freeing up more offer times for other types of calls. It's only six months, as opposed to in the past, we've done either one to two years. As we are looking at the format that that's being done, and possibly even a vendor change, so we just want to extend this program as it currently stands before we come back with some possible revisions for you.
Yeah, I would just say, I've had concerns with this program in the past. I've expressed those. So, I do look forward to the, you know, whatever the shakeup is with regards to it going down the road, and see if we can't make it a little bit more effective.
Yeah. As a sneak peek, we're looking at putting more responsibility on the actual alarm companies and the alarm owners, homeowners or business owners, to try to get more responsibility from that angle.
Okay.
Another question. So, this is, I think you just answered one of my questions. These are for false alarms from private residences, right?
It's businesses, residences, all alarm companies.
Okay. So, again, if you can educate me on this, I have a private alarm also, and I have teenagers who forget to turn it off and the alarm, but then I do get, I have to pay, I get like a fine to pay that false alarm. So, where does that money that you find, the people go to, towards, does it go towards like this contract also, or?
So, some of it is, some of it is consumed by the contractors. They administer that program in the sense that they, you know, the mailing, the notices, and such like that, but the rest of the money is then comes back to, I believe, the general fund within the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on FARP? The last one is the janitorial services. This is a contract renewal with ABM. This is for the Gardner Building, I believe, the precincts, as well as the academy. This just extends the contract and also takes into consideration the 2024 prevailing wage increase. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Major. And then for item seven, we do have a request, a motion to defer indefinitely on this one, but we do have Jonathan Adams here to speak on that.
Item seven pertains to the 2024 paving unpaved streets project, and that's been discussed a couple times with you guys. Basically, we don't have the, the bids came in higher than anticipated. We don't have the funds for that, so we're going to go ahead and just, it sounds like we're going to request deferral indefinitely, so.
Councilmembers, a poll.
Yeah, I move to defer indefinitely, item number seven.
It's been moved and seconded. You got comment?
I could just speak to that. We met as Traffic Calming Committee, and I didn't disagree with the projects, thought that they were good projects, but just didn't think that was the right funding source, and the recommendation was to use those funds for the next year and 2025, because the costs were just higher. And so, I think that came into a broader discussion about how to do this program better, and I think as standing up a traffic commission, that would be one of the items to talk about, is how to do the unpaved streets program more effectively, I guess.
Councilmember, Bingle.
Are we going to incur any penalties if we don't?
No, we shouldn't be. The only, the only risk would be higher bid pricing next year if we do rebid it, so.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor of deferral indefinitely, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Any abstentions? That is deferred indefinitely. Thank you.
Number eight?
Yep.
Item eight is the proposed little bid for, little bid contract with Shamrock Paving, this of Spokane. This is for the Washington Stevens grind and overlay project from Third Avenue to Spokane Falls Boulevard. This bid was for $1,985,000, to which we proposed to set aside 10% administrative reserve. We had two other bids received. The little bid was about $97,000 or 5% over the engineer's estimate. Work on this project is expected to begin this summer and be completed by this fall.
Thank you, Jonathan. Number nine, this will be briefed by Rick Giddings.
Good afternoon. Item nine, A through F, are tiered contracts for heavy-duty vehicle repair trucks. We use these vendors for certain types of repairs that either we don't or can't do, or when we are at our capacity in the shop. Since not all these vendors are, have the same strengths or availability at any given time, we set up multiple tiered contracts, so we have the ability to choose a vendor that can either be faster, or better, or less expensive for any situation. We have one Tier One contract, that's Western Peterbilt. They're awarded $800,000 a year, $4 million total for the five years of the contracts. Tier Two, we have two Kenworth Sales, Common Sales and Service. These are each $200,000 per year. And then Tier Three, we've got three Tier Three Gordon Truck Centers, SWS Equipment, RWC International, and these are $100,000 per year per vendor. Any questions on those?
Councilmember, Bingle.
Are all these in the budget?
Yes, they are.
And are these all for five years?
Five years, yes.
All for five years. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Number 10, will this be briefed by Lennon?
Good afternoon, council. Thank you for having me, Council President. This is an increase of one of our contracts for an officer-involved shooting that resulted in a lawsuit against the city for loss of life. This is a case that we updated or we talked about a few weeks ago, but this is the gentleman that was pointed a firearm at police officers, and they returned fire before they were shot by him. This case is in the preliminary status or discovery process right now, so we're going back and forth, taking depositions, interviewing witnesses, that type of stuff. If this is a case that we, our opinion, it doesn't have a whole bunch of merit, but we have
but just didn't think that was the right funding source. And the recommendation was to use those funds for the next year and 2025 because the costs were just higher. And so I think that came into a broader discussion about how to do this program better. And I think as standing up a traffic commission, that would be one of the items to talk about is how to do the unpaved streets program more effectively, I guess.
Councilmember Bingle.
Are we going to incur any penalties if we don't?
No, we shouldn't be. The only, the only risk would be higher bid pricing next year if we do rebid it, so.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of deferral indefinitely, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? That is deferred indefinitely. Thank you.
Okay.
Number eight, yep.
Item eight is the proposed little bid for, little bid contract with Shamrock Paving, this of Spokane. This is for the Washington Stevens grind and overlay project from Third Avenue to Spokane Falls Boulevard. This bid was for $1,985,000, to which we proposed to set aside 10% administrative reserve. We had two other bids received. The little bid was about $97,000 or 5% over the engineer's estimate. Work on this project is expected to begin this summer and be completed by this fall. Any questions?
Thank you, Jonathan. Number nine, this will be briefed by Rick Giddings.
Good afternoon. Item nine, A through F are tiered contracts for heavy-duty vehicle repair trucks. We use these vendors for certain types of repairs that either we don't or can't do, or when we are at our capacity in the shop. Since not all these vendors are, have the same strengths or availability at any given time, we set up multiple tiered contracts. So we have the ability to choose a vendor that can either be faster, or better, or less expensive for any situation. We have one Tier One contract, that's Western Peterbilt. They're awarded $800,000 a year, $4 million total for the five years of the contracts. Tier Two, we have two Kenworth Sales, Cummins Sales and Service. These are each $200,000 per year. And then Tier Three, we've got three Tier Three Gordon Truck Centers, SWS Equipment, RWC International. And these are $100,000 per year per vendor. Any questions on those?
Councilmember Bingle.
Are all these in the budget?
Yes, they are.
And are these all for five years?
Five years, yes.
All for five years, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Number 10, will this be briefed by Lyndon?
Afternoon, Council. Thank you for having me, Council President. This is an increase of one of our contracts for an officer-involved shooting that resulted in a lawsuit against the city for loss of life. This is a case that we updated or we talked about a few weeks ago, but this is the gentleman that was pointed a firearm at police officers, and they returned fire before they were shot by him. This case is in the preliminary status or discovery process right now. So we're going back and forth, taking depositions, interviewing witnesses, that type of stuff. If this is a case that we, our opinion, it doesn't have a whole bunch of merit, but we have to defend it. And so the costs are increasing. This will increase our contract to $250,000. I do not anticipate that that would get us to trial, so I will likely be back here absent the plaintiff's counsel dismissing the case.
Any commentary? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lyndon.
Thank you.
Number 11, this will be briefed by Jason Akoniski.
Good afternoon, Council, Council President, Mr. Jones, here seeking your approval for an ongoing auction services contract. This is replacing a previous auction provider that closed up business after long years of service for the city and the region. So just helps us with all of our surplus goods and making sure that we're selling and being compliant with disposing of surplus property. Any questions?
So Jason, with this entity, in all things that are sold, goes back to whatever their various funding sources had been originally?
For the most part, there are some aspects of SMC that tell us how we have to redirect some of those funds back to facilities, but otherwise, yes.
Any questions?
Thank you, Jason. Number 12, this contract amendment will be briefed by Michelle Murray.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you very much. This is asking for your approval to amend the Neighborly contract. Neighborly is a software provider that we use to do all of our applications for our ARPA NOFA's. And there was a house cleaning item because they had, we had money on the contract, but then they renewed the contract, which used that money. So I needed to add some additional funds to pay for some modules that we'd already had. And then with your most recent allocation, we have some, the need for some additional modules. And then we put in some language to have the ability to purchase five additional licenses.
Councilmember Zepon.
Yeah, I move to approve the Zepon proposed amendment.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Councilmember Bingle and Councilmember Catcar.
Yeah, what are we doing in the amendment?
Yeah, that just gives them the authority to purchase more Neighborly modules.
Yeah, I was just, for clarity, the modules, could you describe? I'm not.
So we, every time we were doing a NOFA, we did, we publish the notice of funding. We build an application inside of the system itself where people can go register at Neighborly, and then they can apply for the funding within the program. And then everything is housed in one spot, all applications, all scoring, all awards. And then we manage the award in the system as well. When they, when they want draws, they submit all of their receipts through the system. And we approve them in the system, and then we process them for payment. And then everything is just in one full package.
Great. And then the, what, the changes in the amendment are essentially the increases that are requested?
Well, we had a, it's, part of it is a housekeeping item, because we had money to purchase 20 modules when we first started ARPA in 2022 and started doing all the applications. A renewal came around, and they paid the renewal, which used up our funds, okay? So then I'm asking for the additional funds to pay for those modules that did not get paid for. And then I'm asking for an additional, I think, eight modules, so that we can do all the extra, all the new allocations in the system as well. And I just kind of did the housekeeping and bundled it all together, because if I didn't do it, CHHS was going to be back here with another amendment.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I guess I'm confused. In the, in the packet, it says 14,000, right? Am I wrong on that? But in the contract I'm seeing here, it says 52,750.
There's an additional $21,000 invoice attached to the package with the 14. And then additional licenses are $150 a month times five. So it's up to, if we added it for a full another year, it would be up to another 10 or whatever.
Yeah, I see it says additional amount of $28,000 for eight modules, 21,000 for the implementation of 14 modules, and then 3750 for the purchase of five licenses. And they're not to exceed 52,750.
I did not do the math.
I, I, yeah, I guess I just see 28,000 as opposed to 14. Did we already pay 14, or?
No, there's, the invoice that's attached, this is 20, I think, is it 21 or 28? I can't remember. It's 28.
28 and then 21 on top of that.
So we had originally had those taken care of. Like I said, there, a renewal came through, and they didn't process the renewal and add funds for the renewal, and they used that money that was encumbered under that contract. I'm just, and it wasn't spent by us, it wasn't spent by ARPA. I'm just asking for additional funds so I can pay what I owe them.
Yeah, I'm supportive of it. I'm just saying, I don't, I don't see the concurrence between this and the one, so I don't know if we need to adjust that at all. It just seems, it's a different amount.
I apologize. This kind of happened all at the last minute because I realized what had happened, and I tried to throw it all together, and we may have missed some dots, i's and t's.
So could we ask Michelle to connect with you between now and 6 o'clock, Councilmember Bingle, on the numbers? I don't want to totally delay this if possible.
Yeah, I, like I said, I want to pay it. I just want to make sure that on our packet, all the information is correct. Yeah.
So we could still adopt the current amendment and if needed, propose another one. If needed, that way we can keep it moving, so, because I know you need this to keep things moving right now.
Yes, we have NOFA's that are ready to start being built.
Yeah, I want to say again, I have no problem with us paying this out. The, just the numbers don't match. That's my point.
All right. Well, let me get to this. There's a motion and a second to approve the amendment. Councilmember, please get additional clarity as needed. All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? That amendment is passed. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item number 13, this will be briefed by Eldon Brown, but there's also a request motion to defer the following item indefinitely as well.
Good afternoon. Yeah, this pump station we're trying to get built down in the northwest terrace part of town, northwest part of town. We're working out the final details of the financing of that project between the developer and the city share. We're just not there yet as far as being able to bring that back. And I know the council requested seeing some of that, and we intend to get that information to you. We're just not ready yet to actually detail the actual final arrangement between what is the city's share and what is the developer's share of that project. So that's why we're requesting deference.
And Eldon, clarity to indefinitely or to July 15?
On this one, just indefinitely right now. We just need to really sit down and figure that out. And they're going to inform you of the actual details. Be happy to do that, and then we'll bring it back on the docket when we're ready.
Councilmember Catcar.
I'm just curious if you know, and we can follow up offline later if not, but where does the city's share of the funding come from? Or have we not identified that yet?
Basically, what we're looking at is general facility charges. It's kind of a overall city backbone project where we spend utility money on it. And right now, that's the only reimbursement tool we really have, is GFC charges on there. And this thing's probably over the life of a project. It might take 15 to 20 years to actually reimburse the developer. Developer has a proportionate share, the city has a share, because developers really oversizing this pump station to serve a much larger area. So we're just working details out now. It's, we're trying to eliminate three or four city stations to get into this one station. There's lots of details that is going on here that we need to really get into the final numbers and bring them forth to you so you can see that.
Councilmember Bingle.
So again, the developer pays for all this upfront and then is reimbursed over the next 15 to 20 years.
Yes.
Right.
And partly, we'd be trying to credit general facility charges for his properties as much as we can. And then even outside of that, just to get up to a proportionate amount that we deem to be the fair and equitable share between the developer and the city. That's what we're trying to arrive at, especially over a 15-year or 20-year timeline. There's some details we're working out there, so.
And what's, what's the total cost of this project?
It's estimated around 15 million right now.
So the developer would be front-loading the 15 million and then getting paid over the next 15 years or 20 years.
His properties in there, then whatever we can do to, out of other properties under them might tie in. That's the challenge out there. There's a lot of other property that's undeveloped, but when do they tie in? Do they tie in 10 years from now, or there's just lots of moving parts here?
Yeah, I actually did just want to highlight this fact, because it's not the city paying it upfront. It's developers who are putting in the infrastructure. They're putting it in upfront. There's a lot of time value lost in that for $15 million over the course of 15 to 20 years. And so to credit, you know, developers for being good partners with the city and installing this so they can get their projects going forward, I just don't think that's highlighted enough, and so I wanted to bring that up, but thank you.
That's true.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll make the motion to defer indefinitely.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to defer indefinitely. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? That is deferred indefinitely. Thank you, Ellen.
Thanks.
Thank you, Eldon. Number 14, this item will be briefed by Megan Duval, online.
Good afternoon. This is a recommendation to list the Cook Cable House at 1032 North A Street on the Spokane Register of Historic Places, and we briefed this at the June Urban Experience meeting.
Any commentary, questions?
Megan, is anybody opposed to this?
I can't imagine why they would be.
Me either, just.
All right, thank you, Megan.
Thank you, Megan. All right, items 15 and 16, both these will be briefed by Steve McDonald.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of the council. Both these items are related to minor amendments that are taking place in the ILA between the city and the county with regards to the Spokane Workforce Council. Any questions?
Could you just recap really what that council is doing?
Yes. The Workforce Council is the entity in the county region that basically works with businesses and with getting grants and programs that provide training. They work with community colleges and high schools to create training programs. They've been pretty successful in the grants that they've gotten, typically from the federal government, also through the state. And so they are that, that link between businesses and our economy that needs job training and the people that need those jobs. They basically are that, that center point.
And so this is probably into 16, and that is funded how?
They're funded through grants and through, as I understand it, that's the main way that they're funded. It's typically through federal government grants.
I was wondering if the city had it, had to contribute toward this organization for sustainability.
I don't believe the city does. At one point, we provided some low-rent space, which we stopped doing at some point. But I don't believe there's direct money coming from the city that supports the Workforce Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Item number 17, this one will be briefed by Adam Scholey.
Good afternoon, everybody. The CHHS Department is requesting permission to accept the 2023 through 2025 supplemental operating budget that has been granted to the city of Spokane by the Department of Commerce. These include funds that will be added to existing CHG contracts. The city of Spokane, Community Housing and Human Services, will receive approximately 9.1 million in funds to specify for the state fiscal years. The purpose of this grant is to maintain current levels of state of emergency housing services, homeless subsidies, and current shelter beds. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Adam.
Excellent.
Number, item number 18, this will be briefed by Colin Quinnhurst.
Good afternoon, council members. This is a contract with MIG Inc. out of Seattle, Washington, to conduct work on the Division Street Transit Oriented Development Pilot Project. That's funded with Federal Transit Administration grant dollars and is a partnership with Spokane County and Spokane Transit Authority. This was briefed on June 10th.
Councilmember Bingle.
What, how is this working in connection with the BRT?
Yeah, so, so what we're looking at is everything behind the curb line. The BRT project is everything in the public right-of-way, and we're selecting three to five station areas and looking at the zoning behind the curb line, the amenities behind the curb line, and how do we make the most of our space near those transit stations? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Appreciate it. Now, moving into the legislative agenda, there is two SBOs on here. The first one is ordinance C36529. This one will be briefed by Ariel Anderson.
I'm going to brief for Ariel. So, thank you, council, for having me. I'm Heather Page. This is the Haifumi Inn SBO. I briefed it a couple of weeks ago to the Finance Committee. This moves the budget into CHHS, so we can actually fund that project that we've already approved, both in 2023 and in 2024. Any questions on that? Okay?
All right, thank you, Heather. And then the next ordinance, C36530, this was a part of the consent number 18. So any additional questions on that? Nope, thank you, Colin. And then moving into emergency ordinances, we have one, it's C36531. This has been briefed before as well, but Mike Piccolo is here with, for any further questions on that.
We're so happy to see you, Mr. Piccolo, today.
Just so glad to be out of jury duty. No, this is actually a very good experience. This ordinance has not changed since it was briefed a couple of weeks ago. It has to be enacted by the end of this month, otherwise we have to wait two more years. And it does require five affirmative votes of the city council, and that will get into the biennial budgeting process.
Councilman Bingle.
So is this an emergency because of timing, or is it an emergency because it's an emergency?
I think it's an emergency for three reasons. One is we got that uniqueness where the state law says you need five votes, or else it's five out of seven. Second, it has to be in place, enacted by the end of the month. We don't want to mix up any words by what does mean to be enacted by city charter versus state statute. And the third reason is to get the biennial budgeting in place to hopefully avoid some of the budgeting situations we've seen coming out of COVID, dealing with the opioid crisis, trying to get in place that two-year process so we can deal with these emergency situations on a, on a larger two-year basis.
I guess that didn't really answer my question, though, because had we proposed this, this ordinance three weeks ago, would we have needed it to be an emergency?
Yes, because it still needs to be in place, effective. We can't wait 30 more days after the council approves it. We need the five votes, and we need, from my, from my view and talking with the budget folks, we need that biennial budgeting so we can properly address these emergencies.
Councilman Catcar, then Councilman Akutsky.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my interpretation is it's, it's urgent because it has to be put in place before the end of the month. My only comment would be it doesn't, wouldn't have to be urgent had we done this a few months ago, which I think we, we absolutely could have done, so.
And that was my point.
Councilman Akutsky.
If I'm remembering correctly, I think we've done the same amount of process on this, right? We're just making it an emergency ordinance so that it goes into effect immediately. Isn't that correct?
Correct, so we have it in effect before the end of June, and there's no question about what does enactment mean under the city charter versus under state law.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just one last comment on this. It's not as if like this sprung up on us and needed to happen. It's just the fact that, again, this is one of those instances where I would say it's an emergency because we need it enacted by a certain timeframe as opposed to being able to have it go just as a regular ordinance, have it be signed 30 days and have it going on. That's the point.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. Now, moving on to resolutions and final reading ordinances, we have Resolution 2024-0053, and there is a Zepon proposed amendment on this one.
Yeah, I move to adopt this.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Councilmembers, anyone speak to your amendment?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't wait to get called on. Sorry for that. Just got eager there. But yeah, this is unupdated to the Safe Streets Now resolution. A few of the changes, it updated their previous committee version with some data from the city of Spokane instead of Spokane County. We met with Reimagine Spokane and some other community groups and looked at what are some things that they would like to see implemented immediately, and they provided a long list. Went back and worked with the Public Works Department on things that they thought they could realistically get done. And this, I believe, captures the things that they believe they can get done this year. And so it specifically calls out three pilot projects, one per each district neighborhood. That would be curb extensions and traffic islands. It also specifically calls out enhanced bike lane improvements in addition to Riverside. So Riverside and another one to try to pilot that to expand these programs. It also requests to expand these programs. It also requests that the administration work to get cameras up, automated safety cameras, up as quickly as possible with the council priorities. And it also requests purchasing of items such as temporary speed tables and other items that we can start implementing. Those ones sound like it'll take a little bit longer to work out, but if we have them purchased, and that takes a process, then by the time they arrive, hopefully, we can start getting those in the ground, too. So those are the main changes.
Did you want to speak, Councilmember McCackhart?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had it. Councilmember Bingel.
Yeah, how's the administration feel about the resolution?
Yeah, they've been very supportive, and I want to thank the administration, in particular the mayor's office, for their support in helping this and really pushing this forward.
Councilmember Dillon.
We did just change the name, confirmed it.
So that takes a suspension of the rules.
Yeah.
So it's first this, and then I'll make another motion for that.
That'll be coming up.
So it's been moved in second to adopt the amendment. Councilmember Bingel?
Okay, sorry, now I'm confused. So what is the amendment now?
Everything I described is in there. I'm going to make a request to suspend the rules to change the name.
Council President.
Yes.
I recommend that the motion to suspend the rules and then add that later change be handled before you vote on this amendment. This is an amendment to an amendment, and as such, you should be voting on the amendment to the amendment, the one you just circulated this afternoon first.
Because that amends the amendment.
Yes.
Okay, so.
So we are now voting on the name change first.
We have to withdraw the motion and.
No, there's an amendment. We're amending the amendment.
Correct. So basically, the other amendment will just be set aside. You'll vote on this more recent one now, after you vote on suspension of the rules. If that's approved, you can vote on whether or not you want the name change adopted. Then you can vote on whether or not to adopt the amendment as a whole.
With the motion on the floor, we can do that.
We're going to set it aside. Now we're going to go to suspending the rules. So I entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to suspend the rules.
I would support one for this specific purpose, if that's what it is.
All right. It's been moved in second. All in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
Any abstentions? Okay, so go ahead, Councilmember Zepone.
So now I move to amend the amendment with a name change that was circulated about an hour ago, and that is simply a name change and adds one additional whereas, two whereases, that renames this the Janet Mann Safe Streets Now Resolution. And I don't know if Councilmember Dillon or Klitschke wants to speak to that at all.
I just heard from the family, and they said that this sounds lovely and really appreciate us doing this, so thank you.
And just clarity, this was the pedestrian that was hit and killed crossing.
Brown and Division.
Brown and Division, yes. A longtime community advocate in Spokane.
So a way to honor.
And a way to honor her and to bring more awareness to public safety. Councilmember Bingel.
What are the two recitals that we added, then?
I'm sorry.
What were the two recitals that we added?
I can read them for you if you like.
Yes.
Whereas Janice Mann was an author, former director of a local foster parenting program, and revitalized the Ridpath Club Apartments along with her husband. And whereas on June 11th, Janice Mann was struck and killed in a hit-and-run while crossing the street at the intersection of Brown Street and Main Avenue in the City of Spokane.
And the most recent version is the correct name of Janet Mann. There was a miscommunication, so.
So, all those motions, been all those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Any abstentions? Okay, that is approved. On to the next amendment. That's already on the floor. It has been moved in second to adopt that one. All those in favor, please indicate by, any discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? That is approved. Thank you.
All right, now on to the next Resolution, 2024-0055. This will be briefed by Eric Poulsen.
Thank you, council, and Mr. Jones. I briefed these recommendations from your legislative team at the Finance Committee earlier this month. The feedback I got afterwards is that they were briefed far too extensively, and so I'm available now to answer any questions you might have. And I also did want to note that I took some feedback that day from several council members and incorporated them into a new draft, there are minor changes, but if you wanted to hold on this vote for a week to incorporate those language changes into the federal agenda, you could certainly do that. It will not send our legislative program into chaos to wait for a week, so.
I'll make a motion to suspend.
Just throwing that out there.
I'll make the motion to defer this until July 8th, to give us some time to update the language and.
Great, and I'll circulate that to you. It's not world-changing, but does reflect some concerns and issues that you all raised, so.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? It's been moved in second to defer till July 8th. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Any abstentions? That is deferred. Thank you.
Eric, and then on to Resolution 2024-0056. This will be briefed by Jacobi Byrd.
Council President, council members, this is the resolution that is required by code to formally appoint somebody to your Budget Director role, central staff position in the council office that helps you all with everything budget-related internal to our office and external to the city.
Councilmember Zepone?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to add a name to this position.
Second. Been moved in second to suspend the rules for name addition. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? No. Councilmember Zepone?
Now, I'd like to make a motion to add Catherine Fairborn to this position, or to the blank.
Second. It's been moved in second to add Catherine Fairborn to this position. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? Welcome, Catherine. Thank you.
Well, we don't know yet.
We don't know yet, but hopefully, that's a personal comment.
All right, thank you. Now, Resolution 2024-0057. This will be briefed by Scott Jordan.
Good afternoon, council. This is a resolution just to settle a property damage claim from a water leak that we had back in December of 2023. The total amount's $59,996. Most of the work has been done, and we do have a settlement agreement signed. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Scott. Now, we have Resolution 2024-0058. This will be briefed by Heather Page.
So this is our home ARP, our first allocation of home ARP funds for supportive services. And I want to take a minute to review the timeline on this because this all started back in 2021. I wasn't here, several of you all weren't here, so I think it's important to review that. So, in April of 2021, HUD awarded through the Formula Grant mechanism money in the amount of $4,628,671 to the City of Spokane to spend through the home ARP program. That money was accepted in October of '21 by the council, then through December of '21 into June of '22. There was a collaborative effort with the county to conduct public engagement and outreach on the priorities for this money, and then we put forward a plan to HUD at that point in time to spend the money. So that would have been about, I think, January, January of '22, '23, sorry. Yeah, there's a lot of dates here, '23. At that time, we also had to amend the annual action plan for 2021 because this money is spent under what's called the Consolidated Plan of 2020 to 2024, and it has to follow those rules and regulations that are set out, both in the Consolidated Plan and in the annual action plan. So then, once that was all approved by HUD, we were able to go out for an open and competitive RFP that took place last fall. The allocations were identified then. The plan needed to go back to HUD with public comment to be approved for funding. We got that approval in the beginning of May for these three supportive services projects, and that's what I'm coming to you today for approval to fund those three projects. The details of the projects, $462,861 to Spokane Neighborhood Action Partners for a pilot program that will look at five of their affordable housing projects that currently don't have any supportive services attached to them. And then we have another $225,000 that will go to Cento Commons to expand their supportive services, and $203,63 that will also go to Community Frameworks to fund another four of their properties with supportive services. The details as far as how many households they will fund are all in here in the briefing paper. Do you have any questions on this? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Heather. And then Resolution 2024-0059. I believe Alex is out of the office, so that needed to be briefed.
I'll just ask little, Councilmember Navaratti.
Yeah, we are incorporating three, I'm blanking, constituents for the committee, for the Equity Subcommittee.
Councilmember Dillon.
Tyler Tomoosh, Lindsay Shaw, and I'm trying to remember the third off the top of my head. Anna Trustee.
Did you say Wendy Shatz?
What was that?
Did you say Wendy Shatz, too?
Wendy Shatz? Four.
Four.
All right. And then we have Resolution 2024-0060. That'll be moved under hearings number one. And then we have the Navaratti Proposed Amendment Resolution that was a part of the consent item number one. And then we have the Ordinance C36517 with a number of different amendments. This item will be briefed by Adam McDaniel. If there's any additional questions on this one.
Now, Councilmember, entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the Zepone Proposed Amendment, which was filed on June 21st, so the last one in the packet.
Second. It's been moved in second to adopt the amendment proposed. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I can speak to it to explain. So there were some changes to it. Let's see if I have that memorized. We had discussed that it'd probably be helpful to have briefing papers for amendments in the future as summaries of what these are. But essentially, this amendment keeps together most of everything intact. It had some modifications to the composition of the Transportation Commission seats, modified language around the parking seat that just said that person has lived experience and expertise in parking. It also made a requirement that a majority of the board at any one time should be city residents. It was not clear in there. The previous language allowed for non-city residents, but didn't have a requirement, so it added a residency requirement. It adds Northeast PDA and West Plains PDA as liaison roles to the board. It also puts term limits on the board, a two-year term limit instead of a four-year term limit. And the first terms would commence this year, in 2024, and none would expire at the end of this year, figuring that was too short of a time period, so applicants can know that they would serve either until the end of 2025 or the end of 2026. So the first group would be two-year or a year and a half in two and a half years, and then after that, it would begin the two-year rotation. And then there was a language around the changes to Traffic Calming Fund that just clarified that the commission would make recommendations on projects and priorities for the Traffic Calming Fund, but not necessarily every use. So if there's needs of like $10,000 mobile speedback trailer fixes that necessarily have to go to the Traffic Commission to approve that spending of that fund.
Councilmember Bingel.
Did I hear that the parking advisory position would need to have lived experience?
That was the same language. I was trying to capture the lived experience of parking.
I guess I don't understand what that means.
They park downtown. So whether that's a resident or a business person that parks downtown, lived parking experience. The previous language said they had to be a resident or a business owner or operator that lived downtown. I thought that also took out people who might not own or operate a business, but might just be an employee of a business who might be an expert in parking.
Okay.
So that was the language I proposed.
Yeah, I appreciate the idea. I think it's a good idea. I think the language there might be a little confusing considering how we use lived experience most everywhere else, and so. Yeah.
It was not about homelessness.
No, I know, I know, but yeah.
Councilmember McCackhart.
Yeah, I mean, I'm of two minds, but kind of leaning strongly one way. So obviously, downtown parking is a big deal, but so is parking outside of downtown, and so I think you kind of need both perspectives. But for downtown in particular, I think you need somebody that really understands the nuances of downtown parking, and it's great that they park. But, for example, right now, there's a proposal to double the cost of residential parking passes downtown. I would like somebody who actually has some understanding of why that doesn't make any sense. And so I want, you know, those types of individuals, not just somebody who's been downtown once and parked their car once. So I think they have to have more legitimate experience, if not residential experience, but I think they need to have a lot more experience than just lived experience.
Councilmember Klitschke.
I think the reason for the change is the way that it was worded before, they'd have to own a business rather than be an employee, so somebody with expertise like Andrew Rolls would not be able to serve in that position. So we were trying to open it up for people that have valid expertise.
I agree. I just think we've gotten too broad now.
Okay. Councilmember Zepone?
Yeah, I'll address, I think the guardrail here was expertise in parking systems, because part of my fear was also that you might get a resident who knows the residential parking, but they might not know the commercial parking system. And so the previous language was like, it could be a resident who has experience parking downtown, but that could leave out a whole system of it. So the intent is not to have just a person who parks downtown. The lived experience was to address that previous language that says you have to have experience parking downtown, but really have parking expertise, and it says parking system expertise, not just residential parking expertise. So that was the intent. And I think ultimately, it'll come down to council confirming, but it was trying to give some guidance on what we're looking for.
Councilmember Bingel.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea. I like where you're trying to go. I'm just, again, worried that, again, somebody parked one time downtown, and I hear what you're saying. Can you read that section, then, just so we can make sure that it's ready to roll, because I'm trying to find it right now? Because if it's lived, you know, experience in parking downtown, but also you have to have expertise in parking systems, I think that that does sort of, I think it encapsulates it.
Yeah, I found it, too.
Yeah, and also, I guess, who determines the expertise in that? That would be us.
The mayor and council.
Sure, okay.
So it's one representative who has lived experience in the downtown district and who has expertise with the city parking system and multi modes of transportation in the City of Spokane. So probably better language would have been lived experience in the downtown parking district.
But then there's an "and" in there as well, and experience with multimodal.
Expertise with city parking system and multi modes of transportation in the city system, so. It was an attempt to try to pull together things.
What page is that on?
It's PDF 759.
You got a commentary? I want to speak to this. Community Assembly had came to council president who wanted representation and voting voice on this committee, and we did defer this to get input from them. We got some, not as much as we had hoped. So even though this amendment's here, which I will be supporting only because it does not give the PDAs a voting seat either. They will all be liaisons, and so with that, I think there will be equitable representation and a voice on this committee. I know it's been challenging to get stood up, so I would be in support of the amendment. Any other commentary? It's been moved in second to support the amendment dated June 21st. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
Any abstentions?
I think it was four to two.
Four to two? Okay, that passes. Let's keep going.
All right, thank you. So Ordinance C36528, this was briefed before, but Adam McDaniel's here if there's any additional questions on this one.
Councilmember Chip, any additional questions on this? All right.
All right. Ordinance C36120, this one will be briefed by Eldon Brown.
We're actually asking for a deferral on this one for three weeks, primarily to, I think, be July 15th, to actually work out the final details of an agreement that property owners are working out between Silver Saro and the Morig on one side and the VOA on the west side on how we administer the parking, the no parking along the west side of that curb line. They've got attorneys involved, just going back and forth, working out details, and we were hoping to be ready to go now. But it looks like we, in fact, I talked to both of them today, and July 15th looks like a good date that they think we should be ready to go for final reading. So we're just asking for a deferral until July 15th for the final reading.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to defer till July 15th. Any commentary? I want to say thank you, Eldon. This has been quite the process in that we are here and that 15th, that July 15th is the end date. I'll be super excited for that. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes? Abstention that is deferred till July 15th.
Thank you, Eldon. First reading ordinance is Ordinance C36532, it's going to be briefed by Chris Wright.
Or I don't know if Mr. Piccolo would prefer to do it, since it's easier.
Mr. Piccolo, Jacoby does have the flowchart, if you'd like that brought up on the screen.
Perhaps Chris and I can tag team this a bit. So this was briefed to the council at one of your committee meetings. And between the different staff members, we tried to incorporate the recommended changes. And the one, I'm not sure which draft you have, if it has the one with the edits. Well, they have a clean version of. So I worked with Mary, Mary Ramatza, who has been working on this one to clean up the process, excuse me, involving the first two stages of review of where, whether or not the person was even subject to the Code of Ethics and whether or not they have alleged facts that if true, it may be a violation. So he cleaned up that language, put in some very tight timeframes. I won't go through all the details, but we put in timeframes where, you know, five days this has to happen, 10 days this has to happen. There was a suggestion that we have the hearing examiner do those first review, and the concern we have with that is, once the hearing examiner touches it, he's done with it. He cannot, he or she cannot hear it again. On the, on the backside, after we have possible investigation completed and the commission make a ruling, that can be appealed to the hearing examiner. If we put the hearing examiner up front, he cannot, he or she cannot do the, the hearing later on. So then we're stuck trying to hire a separate outside hearing examiner. So he kept the language with the city attorney's office doing the initial review, but added in language that at every step of the way, the city attorney's communication with the, with the chairperson or the commission, any reports, any, any written reports will all be made public, posted on the website, so it's very clear. And also making it very clear that it is a recommendation that the chairperson can make the first determination and that the commission can make the second one regarding whether or not there's even complaint, complaint with facts to justify a violation. So I think Chris added additional language on the, the fact that just about every document is going to be subject to disclosure, but also posted on the website. We're not going to wait for a request. Those are posted on the website. In the adjudication stage, we again put in quite, quite a bit of detail on the timing for the process. So we, I think we nailed that down pretty, pretty well. We're proposing, and this may already be in your copy, that the reference to the recall process be removed. It goes back quite a ways, and I remember when this first came up, probably has to be at least 15 years ago. Our, the legal advice was, this should not be in the Code of Ethics because state law regulates the recall process. It made it to the city charter. The, you know, the, the legal department could not prevent that from happening.
Is there, is there a mechanism to get a, a legal opinion from a judge or, or otherwise?
We would have to file legal action to the court, and the court would, would clearly ask, is there a point of controversy here? And if there isn't, the judge probably would not give an opinion. We could ask the Attorney General's Office through one of our state legislators to give an opinion.
That'd be a great idea. I just, I, it just makes me uncomfortable to take steps that, you know, limit certain portions of our charter that were approved by voters and that no, no judge or legal authority has told us that you cannot implement. And this is one that, you know, it, it may not come around for 50 years, right? So, so, you know, not necessarily the, the biggest issue, but I do just, it just makes me uncomfortable to take that step of basically saying we're not going to abide by a certain charter provision because our opinion is that it's, it's running afoul of the law, not the opinion of, of the state.
And so not to slow down this process, maybe we leave that in there, but then still ask for the legal opinion. And we are still separating out the whistleblower protection ordinance, which is a requirement of state law. Several years ago, it was merged into the Ethics Code, was not a good match. It, it just, we kind of lost track of where the whistleblower protection ordinance was, so we're taking that back out at a separate chapter of the SMC. And the only word changed to that is where you can file your whistleblower complaint. You can file it now with the director, the director of HR, the hearing examiner, and the current language says, or the county prosecutor, which never made sense to anybody. We think it meant to say the city attorneys, with the city attorney. So those three entities can now take the whistleblower complaints.
I'm not sure, Chris, if you had any other ones, changes you want to point out?
So I want to have Mr. Wright specifically speak to the proposed amendment that we need to vote on, on this one, what exactly that changes.
Yeah. The amendment that's in the packet actually incorporates all of the staff review and recommended changes since you last were presented with this. So a lot of the changes were fairly minor, but, and tightening up the, the hearing process, removing the recall language and adding the language about posting all of the documents in a case. I will say that beyond that, this ordinance does not change any of the criteria for prohibited contact, conduct. All that stays the same. None of that has been, been touched. So the same standards of conduct are going to apply as they always have.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for the amendment.
So moved?
Is it a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the amendment as proposed. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes?
No.
Any abstentions? That amendment is passed. And thank you, Mr. Piccolo. I think you spoke to the whistleblower. Was there anything else you want to add to that?
No.
Okay. Any other questions from council on the whistleblower? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. And then we have Ordinance C36534. This will be briefed by Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, we heard this in Public Safety. This is gun violence prevention for a safer Spokane. There's really kind of three core components to this ordinance around the discharge of firearms within city limits, possession such as opening carry at events at our public facilities, city-owned buildings, as well as confiscation and forfeiture of the Spokane Police Department. I think the big change since we last heard this ordinance, we tightened it up a little bit around, the earlier draft had within 500 feet of any home habitat where animals and humans might live. This would completely ban discharge within city limits.
There is an amendment. Can I get a motion for the amendment?
Yeah, I will so move the Cathcart amendment.
Is there a second?
Would you want to speak to it a little bit?
Yeah, I will, I'm going to get it moved in second, then I'm going to have, is there a second? I will second Councilmember Cathcart, go ahead and speak to the amendment.
Thank you, yeah. Essentially, after we had our last hearing on this, I got some feedback from a city employee who was a little, I guess stunned at not knowing necessarily that you, it was already prohibited to have, bring, you know, a weapon into City Hall for personal protection. And so it made me realize that there are a lot of people who commute to City Hall, walk, bike, whatever, and they're in spaces where they need to be protected, and they don't feel safe and perhaps are not safe. And so making sure that we have lock boxes available for those city employees in particular, as well as the public that maybe needs to access certain areas of City Hall or other municipal buildings, just making that available to them so that there's a place where they can safely commute to City Hall and safely store the weapon, as long as either state law or local law prohibits them from carrying that on their person.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, and I would just say the safest places in the world have violent crime, and, you know, you have a God-given right to be able to defend yourself. And so I think that people should have the ability to protect themselves, and if that means that we need to provide lockers, then we need to provide lockers because the safest place in the world has violent crime, and you have every right to defend yourself. And I think that you should have the right to defend yourself with a weapon, as you may be up against a weapon, so.
So my question, this would apply to electors as well?
To.
To electors as well?
Yeah, that would be the, the idea.
Okay. Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I'll be speaking against the amendment. You know, I've put some work into this to get stakeholder input from, you know, city staff, SPD, the public facilities district. And I think there's kind of a bigger conversation around this amendment. I mean, I, I really do believe in, in safe storage, but in terms of costs, staffing, personnel, unintended consequences, but certainly support the concept. But I think with, in the particular scope of this ordinance, and based on a lot of the feedback that we've gotten, especially from PFD, I'm, I'm challenged with, with this amendment.
Councilmembers, upon, then Councilmember Klitschke?
Yeah, thank you. I was just wondering, Councilmember Cathcart, if you did any outreach to folks to see how this would be implemented, like, did we reach out to departments or?
No, no, but I'm also not proposing to ban carrying weapons, so I'm not doing those things. So, no, there was no outreach. I imagine that we would be built into the current study that we're doing for floors one through three, and we would find a way to accommodate that either on floor three or floor one, or, or both, perhaps, just depends on how we reshape City Hall moving forward.
Councilmember Klitschke?
My interpretation of the amendment led me to assume that we were talking about having storage in all public facilities, which I really don't want to see the city getting into the business of having to store and deal with storing firearms for all of our public facilities. I think we can have the conversation about the city without amending this ordinance. So I will not be voting for this amendment, but I think we can still have that conversation about City Hall if we want to confine that discussion at City Hall.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, how does this apply to people who concealed carry?
To concealed carry?
To concealed carry, yeah.
Well, if you're not allowed to conceal carry in City Hall, if the mayor has not provided the direct permission to do so, which is required, my understanding, under the law right now, then, then you, you can't. You better set your gun down when you enter the, the City Hall.
Yeah. Did you have a comment, Councilmembers, upon?
Yeah, I, I think that also applies for attending schools, and if you're going to a school sporting event, even if you have concealed carry, you can't take your gun to the sporting event at the school.
Agreed. Scary sometimes. And, and I would say the same thing about the PFD. I mean, I, you know, I've seen some things at nighttime after events get out of the Opera House or other things, and it's, yeah, it's unfortunate that folks weren't able to have a place to safely store that stuff.
Or, or even in places where people were at a concert venue or something like that. We saw that in Vegas, that happened, you know, mass shooting that happened in that space, and, you know.
The idea is, I mean, people just have the right to carry. They have the right to protect themselves, and they shouldn't have to set aside that right just because they're visiting City Hall or they work at City Hall, they work for the city. They should, they should be able to be protected regardless. That's, that's the intent behind this.
So there's a motion on the floor that's been moved in second. All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those saying no?
No.
No. Any noes having, any abstentions? All right, thank you. Mr. Jones?
All right, so now we have Ordinance C36535, and then Ordinance 36536 will be both briefed by Melissa Owen.
Thank you, everybody.
And I believe you have a visual that I'm going to need Jacoby to help me with.
So again, Melissa Owen, I'm Assistant Planner with the Development Services Center, and I have two different ordinances here for you. Both are related to adoption of ordinances for planned unit development overlays or PUD overlays. There's really no decision point at this point for council, as the hearing examiner's the decision maker for type three applications such as the planned unit development. And then the Development Services Center and, and other departments make sure that any conditions of approval for those preliminary land use actions are followed when it comes to development. So what we have here are, the first one up on the screen is for Vista's, actually, nope, that's Leetah Glen. Sorry, let me back up. So this is the Leetah, okay. Okay, so this is for Vista's at Beacon Hill. As you'll see in your briefing, this was preliminary passed back in 2005, went through the procedural requirements at that time for the overlay zone as well as a preliminary subdivision process. There were two different council adopted developer agreements over the years that have kept this project alive. And now we have infrastructure going into the ground. The applicant has supplied us with their application for the final PUD overlay. Are there any questions about this one?
Okay. Keep going.
So moving on to Leetah Glen, this proposal was originally passed by the hearing examiner back in 2022. The appeal period also ended in 2022. And again, we have infrastructure approved right now and money spent on putting that infrastructure into the ground. And so again, this is the final procedural element for this overlay zone. For both of these, what will happen, once the adoption of the ordinance takes place, is the GIS mapping layers will not only include the underlying zoning designation, which will be R1 for both of these locations, but you will also see that PUD overlay zone that will be available for viewing as well. Any questions?
It's nice to see you, Melissa.
Okay, you also.
Yeah. How many units total for Leetah Glen?
You know what, Leetah Glen, let me look real quickly. I don't recall that off the top of my head. I'd be happy to send that to you. I do know that they're looking at fewer units because part of my comments during their preliminary review for the, the final PUD overlay and manufactured home park, because that was a dual application as well, was that they update their density calculations so I could just make sure that we were still within density counts. They ran into some additional issues with the steep slopes on that site and having to shift some lots around. So let, if it's okay, maybe I can just get back to you via email and let you know what the current count is based on my initial review.
Councilmember Bingle?
Is it in like the tens, the hundreds?
Oh, it's in the, it's in the hundreds, yeah. And that is a manufactured home park. So unlike Vista's and Beacon Hill, which are multifamily units and townhomes, townhome style multifamily units, Leetah Glen is manufactured home park. All right, I'll get back to you with that detail.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Melissa. And then moving on to our one hearing, this will be briefed by Kevin Pacanso.
Just briefing on this Resolution 2024-0060 for adopt, adoption of the 2025 through 2036 year Conference of Street Program. Hearing's this evening, and my intention is to provide a detailed presentation during the hearing.
And we intend to let you go first, Mr. Pacanso.
Great, thank you.